He's missing, Jason. He's here. Some assholes here. Everybody else brings here. Karen. That's the one that's missing. Shout it out. Alrighty, everybody. Looks like it's 6 o'clock straight up, so we can get rolling. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Are there any announcements? No announcements? Yeah? Is that an announcement, or is that just waving things in the air? Okay. Well, it's good you have them back, because we are now to the presentations. Diane?
Better, better, better. Bingo! Okay. So, as we talked about at the retreat, we're moving forward with the strategic plan. We're on target. As soon as we have the conversation tonight, we will start with the artwork. We're gonna be working with Ray and his team. We will have storyboards at every single site, so that people can put stickers on based on the questions that we have. We will also have an online survey, and I would recommend the long one. People sometimes don't always, you know, respond to everything. That's their choice. We also will have actual open houses, and we'll coordinate those with the branch managers through March. As we talked about at the retreat, Saturdays seem to be the most popular time. So we'll be working coordinating that. I'll be available to come down, or up, depending on where I am. And just to reassure that we do have a very extensive list on our partners, so that we'll make sure that they get emailed, that they will be notified, and that we make sure we outreach as much as we can, especially to the rural areas. And I'm open for questions.
Okay, Stephen?
Thank you for the report and the presentation. In going through the questions, I don't see anything addressing barriers. I see sort of invitations to provide some responses, like number five, "Are you able to find the materials, information, or services you need in one of the library?" And then it goes on to say, "Are the staff nice and friendly in helping you do that?" But a barrier is, is that if you don't speak English. So I'm wondering if there could be a way to put questions in here to address that barrier of language, then also ADA, wheelchair, audio, visual, something like that, and then also geographic barriers. Because if you're there and you speak English, you're gonna have a different perspective of how to answer these questions. But if you don't see any question inviting those type of responses, I don't feel like we're completely being as open as I think we want to be.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara?
Yes, thank you. I was looking at the, actually, a number of kind of small comments here, but on the survey questions on page five, for example, I see at the top someone has put on here already, "Needs Sonoma County Library-specific programs." Are you going to be deleting the things that we don't have, like borrowing microscopes and flu clinics?
Yes, yes. Those were just to make sure that you understood that we were gonna have as many different options as possible, but I still have to dig in and have input from the branch managers, so that we make sure that we get all the programs, not just those that are on the website, but actual programming that they're doing.
And we'll take off the ones that we don't have?
Yes, yes.
And then counter to that, I thought putting on some of the ones that you've got on here that we don't have, and listing those as, you know, what else would you use, giving, doing that would add more, some more ideas. Because it's kind of open-ended here on, I don't know where the question was, but you know what I'm saying, just off, right, yeah, put 'em on. And then I was wondering about... On page 11, the, this particular kind of format under strategic planning questions, how like under number one, there are all these things scrunched together. How, how would we be presenting these particular?
So in a formal survey, they would actually be listed, and there'll be a checkbox. I just didn't want to make it 25 pages for you to have to wield through, line by line.
Okay, so ignore the format?
Yes, please. Where there's a slash, that would actually be a return with a place for a check.
Okay. And then on the small little flyer thing, I had a number of small English major kinds of comments about it. How would I, rather than take everybody's time, how would I?
I'll call you. How's that? I'll call you. And a lot of this, we, I pulled out of the outcomes and replicated it. There's, I, we still are looking for the data to see how much of the outcomes have been achieved, and if these percentages are correct. So even though it may say 90% satisfaction, we're making sure that we actually have accurate data.
Yeah, okay. Well, it'd be great to talk with you just about some-
I'd love to, yes.
-little comments about it. And then finally, on page 15, about halfway down there, it says, "There's one section of brochure that left blank, we can place at commissioners' three goals." Are those just examples?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. And, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, Stephen again?
Yes, I forgot, going back to number 17, as far, in the spirit of keeping things open and inviting and being inclusive, if we're gonna ask that type of demographic question about gender, I'd like to see it be state and invite people to check either male, female, transgendered male, transgendered female, non-binary, or again, as you stated, just not wanting to state at all. More specifically, though, in reference to 19, I've stated this before, and I'd like to see it specifically addressed. When you list, we don't discriminate based on age, race, gender. Gender identity, I would like to see that also listed. As I said before, gender and gender identity are two different things, so, thanks.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah, I really appreciated the write-up that we got in the packet. I have one suggestion. On page seven, under item number 14, you have listed more DVDs. I suggest you add more CDs. So.
Thank you.
Barbara again?
Yeah, I forgot to ask you the question about, I know we're going to include the labs and the friends and this kind of thing, and I'm not sure about our timeframe and how we're going to elicit their cooperation between now and whenever we start this process.
Once, once we have the commissions blessing to go forward, then we'll be working with the public managers and the branch managers to coordinate that. We had had an alternate plan to get them involved, and we didn't meet that particular target. So we're going to be communicating mostly in email, phone, whatever it takes to get them encouraged and excited to join and participate.
Okay, Deborah?
How long are you going to have the online survey up? Just curious, or how long do you think?
We were hoping to have it the whole month of March.
Whole month of March, mhm.
Just be, and, and not to rush everyone, but going backwards, our goal really is to be completed, to be able to present to, at the June meeting, which is early June. So we're, we're backtracking from that. It's putting a little bit more emphasis on, let's get this thing started.
And then also surveys available at the branches and?
Right.
Okay. In San Francisco, sometimes volunteers helped hand them out, just so that it wasn't just to pick them up off the table, or off the, off the reference desk?
We're also working with Vicki to do some kiosks, so they'll be available electronically, as well as paper, and in different languages.
I am anticipated, thank you.
Andy?
I have two questions, please, Diane. First, I think it would be wonderful if we could get this information. What have you done in the past to encourage people to actually, you know, fill out the whole questionnaire?
There are a variety of things. I think the open house is a good way to get it jump-started, but I think our friends of the library, the library advisory boards, our partners, having the information sent to them, many times they'll pass that along, the Chamber of Commerce, the Lions Club, any organizations, your first five, they're a great mechanism to get the information out, to get as much data as possible, having it on your website. But then, where, where are those non-users? So grocery stores, laundromats, you know, car washes, having it advertised and making the, to be able to copy the link and participate.
Okay, I guess a follow-up question. With the, with the online version of the survey, can we include something that says there are, you know, X number of questions, it should take you approximately Y minutes to complete? Or have one of those little progress bars that shows you how you're doing? Because I, I just find personally, I will start surveys and then I just abandon, because it seems like they're gonna go on forever. So, anything you can do to encourage people to finish it, I think would be wonderful.
Okay, I'll work with Vicki and see what the product is.
That's great, thank you.
You'll be my new best friend.
Any other questions, David?
Yeah, and under the Department of Typographical Errors, on page 13, the column in the middle, item number two, eighty, uh, fourth, fifth line down, at the fourth line down, the words "classed," I think should be "classes."
Good catch. And we will, I'll, I'll have a number of people do this, and I apologize, had a personal situation that was somewhat tragic, so I'm a little, but I'm back on track, so we'll definitely, I know some good editors that would be reviewing the documents. And I'm gonna call Barbara.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, it looks really good. Thank you, Diane, very, very much.
Thank you for your time. I'm gonna hang out, if that's okay.
Okay. Is there any public comments? Are there any public comments tonight? Looks like it's all staff in the room. Yep, okay. So, no public appearances, and there's no presentations from an lab, or what have you? Okay, we're down to the director's report.
Okay, then. So, the report's in the packet. This month was heavy on the stakeholder input. Lots of meetings, lots of contacts with community members and various stakeholders. Really enjoyed everything about that. A couple of things that I would like to point out to you. First of all, there's so much in this packet. So the programs, the activities, the technology, everything is just amazing that our staff have been doing. On page 33, I would like to draw your attention to 214% increase in digital checkouts. So Sonoma County Library was recognized as the fastest-growing U.S. digital library in the Overdrive Global Network. That is pretty amazing, and that speaks to the ability of our staff to, to select things that people really want, to make them available, to make them easily findable, and to, and to market them. So, that's the good news. The bad news is that we've still got so much going on in terms of problems with ebook publishers. It's so expensive, that we know that this is what our patrons want, but it's gonna be more and more difficult for us to meet those needs. But I just want you to be aware that we are doing it, and we're doing it really well. And the other thing I will mention is, today is the first day of the expanded hours at Forestville and Occidental. So congratulations to our staff for making that happen, and the commission for approving it. And that's it.
Okey-dokey. Jody? Financial reports?
Are we, can we ask questions?
Oh, sure. Excuse me, okay, yes. Sorry, I just am ramming it through.
You're way down there. Thank you, Ann, and I agree and applaud the, these massive amounts of information that we get. They're just, it is, it's like a running river. I mean, it's just, there's so much going on all the time. I did, I just had a couple of questions in here. On page 23, for example, just, this is just an example under fund development, it starts with the language during January, "I," and so it's obviously some person besides you who wrote this. And I think it would be helpful to all of us if we had the staff names in here by the different categories, so kind of know who's writing things. Under, on that same page, I will, I was at a friends' meeting when they got this letter regarding legal counsel opinion on the summer reading program. They were pretty confused about it. So, I'm still confused about it, if you want to comment on that.
Sure. So, we were exercising extreme caution regarding the giveaway items in particular. This, it's not common for library systems to do this with public funds. Normally, they're paid for with donations or by a sponsor. So we, that was why we sent the letter, saying we would like for the friends and the foundation to, to pay for the giveaway items, the incentives, that, that type of thing. The programs themselves are fully funded through our programming budget. Subsequently, our legal counsel weighed in and said, you know, "This is part of the program, it's a recognized part of the program, it should, this is fine." So then we backed up on that, and said that, we let the friends know that we, we can cover all of this through program funds, and they can go back to concentrating on their individual branches, which is what they prefer to do.
Okay, thank you. I know in the past, the friends did pay for the summer reading program, they were happy to pay for the summer reading program. So when this came up again, anyway, I got you, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. And then I had a couple other quick things. Oh, the, obviously tremendous turnout that we had for under-adult services for the emergency preparedness kits. And I saw that, page 26, and 79 people showed up, and 60 came to another one, and I'm just wondering, it says that community organizations are now contacting us to be part of the program. I'm wondering if we're going to present, be able to present this at other branches.
Yes, we had it planned for a number of different branches. All of the branches?
All branches.
Yes.
Great. And, let's see. I loved, on page 28, the class visits to Roseland Library, and the senior library associate, Marlene Vera, with her menu of activities. It was so clever. I just thought that was just a wonderful way to get kids excited about the library. I just wanted to point that out. And then on page 29, tutor.com, that the service is steady, and it's apparently really, really helpful. I'm gonna have to go online and check that out, because I don't know anything about it. And, let's see. I loved Miss Claire Day at Sonoma. Oh, and on the local authors, page 34, there was quite a excellent report about collecting local works. I have at a number of different events that I've gone to lately, had a lot of different local authors come up to me, and talk to me about their books, and I didn't realize until I read this, kind of what the process is. So I wanted to commend, this is probably Jamie Anderson who read this, but I wanted to commend this, because I think all of us are, you know, come across local authors, and they want to know how to get their works with us.
Okay, Deborah?
I think that's my final, thank you very much.
Deborah?
Great report, thank you. I actually had a question about the, the local authors as well, and, and so I'm, it's terrific that we're putting them in the catalog. Are we cataloging the authors and the books that we don't have in the library? Or are we?
Jamie's coming down.
Yes, Jamie's coming down.
Fabulous, thank you.
Hi, so you're asking if we don't own them in our collection, would we still add them to our local author database?
Yeah, that is what it seemed to be saying.
Yes.
Okay.
We would. So if we happened to also have their works, we would link to them. We would link directly to the catalog, so people could click on that and access those works. But if we don't own them, we would still have an entry in the database for that person with the biographical information that we know about them, and where they're from, and so forth?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on the director's report? Okay, now we'll move on to Jody in the finances.
Good evening. We had a great month in December, because we got two checks from the county for our local sales tax and for our property tax. There had been a dip in the previous month, November, that we're attributing to the power shut-offs. The amount that we got in December is back up to our normal amount that we would expect. We're doing well in the budget, and I'm working to prepare for the budget workshop coming up on the Saturday. And... Preparation for that includes making budget worksheets for each of the divisions, and so that is, is in progress. Our overall outlook for the library in December is that we, for halfway through the year, we are doing well. Randall did catch a mistake that I made in putting the budget report together, and that is... Thank you. Where the... The amount of the $20,452,442 had not yet had the taxes removed, that's actually, should be 9.3 million. And you have my apologies. It's... Been a month of catching up.
What line is that?
That is down at the total revenue for general fund. And so down at that, at that total, it's about three-quarters of the way down the page. Little more than that? 9.3. Yeah, exactly where you are.
And what was the correction that was made?
9.3 million. 20. 9.3. Hey, Barbara? I don't know.
Yes, I just have one question. And we talked about this a little bit at the finance committee meeting, which was the steep decline in the sales tax that we had. Now, I went back and looked at this, that was money that we received in November.
Correct.
So, I've always thought there was a two-month lag time on the sales tax. So that's what confused me, because the fires were in November, and so the two-month lag would actually hit in January.
Yes, but I believe the public safety shut-off started in October. They had one, and then maybe two more in November, if I'm remembering correctly?
I don't, I don't know. I just, it just didn't seem to quite match up with what we have learned about the lag time on the sales tax, because I know we had this question about it last summer. And it was virtually a quarter of a million dollars. It was $245,000, you know, roughly, between the two months, was quite an astonishing number, which, when everybody was talking about the cities being evacuated and the crowds, it kind of made sense, but then it didn't make sense to me time-wise when I thought about it. So...
Okay, I, I've asked at the county, there's, their, that's their guess as well, as to why it was lower. Beyond that, I'm, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, I'm not either. And like I said, it made sense at the finance committee, but then I thought about it some more, and I just didn't think the timing sounded right, so, thank you. If you point out anything, it'd be great, thanks.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Jody.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to commissioner reports, and I'll start as the chair. Went to State of the County Breakfast, and Susan Goran gave a fantastic presentation on where the county's at. It was not always the most uplifting information, but at the same time, it was good, accurate, solid information. And it's something that people need to, needed to hear. But the way she delivered it, it was not depressing at the same time. It was just, okay, so we need to think about this. And it was really very, very well done. And the second speaker, I think his name is Nicholsburg from UCLA, his, his figures and graphs supported some of the things that Susan said, and so it was a very nice roundabout and support thing for it. So it was a really good, I enjoyed it. I actually understood what they were saying too, which is nice. Secondly, last time, there were a couple of comments made. I know we were surprised that the Studio E was opening, but there was also a couple of comments that sounded like people thought we didn't know about it. Studio E being, you know, built and what have you. Actually, it started back before Brett even left. It was the first information we had about it, before we moved into headquarters, and I remember being told at one point, because I went down to ask after it had come up in some meeting, where were they gonna put this? Because I just remember climbing over boxes in that basement, and I couldn't see how they were gonna put some 12-by-12 studio down there. And then later, when it was emptied out, I actually saw it. And then along, I think it was either late 217 or 218, we actually did accept the money from Santa Rosa. And Santa Rosa is the one that is paying for Studio E with their, what is it called? Public educational government funds that comes from Comcast to them for an educational project. And so, it's been there in the background. I know I sometimes forget these things. One of the reasons I remember this is my grandson happens to like to do filmmaking, so, you know, it kind of caught my interest. But things happen, and we don't always remember they're there, and we need to check things out. But it was not being- But it was not being done without our knowledge. We actually passed some stuff on it. This is our last meeting in this building. And I took a plate of cookies down to the people who have been filming us for the last five years and thanked them for the work, for their, their giving up at least one evening, sometimes two evenings a month, just to take our pictures and put us on the television. So... I want to remind everybody, complete your Form 700. That's important. Jane sent you an email on it. If you haven't done it, or if you don't know what I'm talking about, contact Jane and she'll resend the email to you so you can fill it out, because we have to fill that out every year to keep ourselves legal. And it's a very simple form. It's just basically saying you don't have any financial conflicts, I think. But don't take my word for that one. Anyway, okay, so that's the Chair report. Moving on. You want to start at the end with Stephen?
No report.
All righty. Randall?
No report.
All righty, Paul?
I attended the Petaluma Lab, and we talked about a lot of things, but of course, the refresh was the top of the list, so we're kind of excited. I know it's getting pushed back, and that's just normal. So we talked more about that. I also went to Lumicon, which was tons of fun, and got to hold an alligator. I don't, you know, pick it up, anyway. So that was great. And then Tommy Orange the other night at the library was, was a lot of fun. And he's going to be up here more. That's all I'll say.
Deborah?
My report is in the packet, however, one of the things I mentioned was that I was going to American Library Association's Midwinter Conference. And I moderated the United for Libraries Conference Panel, which had a lot of very interesting information about advocacy and legislative affairs and things like that. And two things in particular, the gentleman from United's board talked about the E's of libraries, and that's E apostrophe S as opposed to E A S E, although I think it's probably the similar. And the E's would be, it kind of derived from advertising and marketing campaign that ALA was doing a couple of years ago. And it, if you remember sort of the bright, they're still using it, but bright colors and then just sort of pithy sayings about technology, about all kinds of things. But anyway, the E's of libraries part of that, and the E's include education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement for everyone everywhere. And, and United is trying to help people put together arguments that, that really kind of use those E's and break them down. And it's kind of a, an easier way to go out into the community to talk about the power of libraries and to talk about what we're doing about libraries. So I brought some information back and thought that that might be helpful for the Commission and for maybe some, maybe people who are doing outreach into the communities. And then a second piece of the panel were Friends of the Philadelphia Library. And, you know, Philadelphia loves its libraries. Since Benjamin Franklin, they love their libraries. But, but they also have funding issues there. And, and about, I want to say 75 years ago, maybe it's not quite that long, but, but an organization was founded that specifically was, it was the, not even the Friends of the Philadelphia Libraries, but it was an organization that, that specifically advocated. They went to City Hall, they advocated for library funding. And, and they, it kind of got sleepy, they said, some years ago, and have revved it up in the last, say, five or six years. And some of the stories that these ladies, and, and they've been around for a while. But powerful, powerful stories and powerful ladies. So we videotaped the session, so I will try to send the link to everybody just to, so that they can hear what really passionate people in their communities can say about their libraries. It's not anything that people aren't saying about Sonoma Libraries too, but, you know, if you can kind of borrow from somebody else, it's helpful. Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, David, I mean, Andy, it's close.
Thanks, Reese. My report is in the packet.
Thank you. Barbara?
Yes, my report's in the packet, but I did want to say a couple of things. And then I, of course, have lost where it is. Here it is, page 47 and 48. One of the things about the lag factor, we have to turn these reports in a week in advance, and that, the week after that, like, a whole bunch of stuff happened. I also went to Lumicon, the Tommy Orange thing Friday night at Petaluma was absolutely awesome. Being a kind of a competitive person, I hate to say that actually attendance beat the one at Runner Park, but it was an after-hours event, over 400 people were there, was tremendous. And was sitting, we were sitting next to each other. And it was a, just a tremendous event, tremendous community conversation. There was all kinds of people there that haven't norm, we hadn't seen in libraries necessarily. And so anyway, it just, it's wonderful. I'm a huge fan of our Distinguished Authors Series, and I thank everybody who's involved in that. There is, of course, another one on Wednesday at Sonoma, of course. And so I'll be there. I also wanted to just say a couple of things. The Friends of the Runner Park Cotati Library are coming up with a couple of, two to possibly three significant scholarships for young writers, so they're going to establish $2,500 per year that they'll be having a scholarship with at Rancho Cotati High School. So I just wanted to note that more to come, but it's really exciting, a significant amount of money, I think, and be good for community relations and just to show the good that the Friends do. I did go to the Mayor's and Council Members' Support Sebastopol Social Meeting, and it was a great networking opportunity. I talked to all kinds of, several council members and city managers, and it was just a great way to, to meet up. I believe it's next week that the next Mayor's and Council Members' Event comes, so I hope everybody, as many people as possible can come to that. I wanted to say that I thought the Commission Retreat was excellent, and I thank everybody who worked on that, and Reese and Deborah, and of course Diane. I did go to one of the fitness classes at Runner Park, just because I wanted to get a sense of what one of these, the health ones are. And the One of Events, I think was nice, but very poorly attended, and I would like to see more classes, I think, rather than these kind of One of for the, for the health ones, anyway. And the Water, Energy and Water Efficiency turnout was huge, and it was an excellent event. I wanted to commend the people working on that. The LoCEN Luncheon, I went to along with several other people, and it was a big focus on the census. Every person who's not counted is $1,000 per year for 10 years, so huge emphasis on finding everybody. And I had my census pin that I'd been using. I did want to say that it seems though LoCEN events must be about monthly now. And so there's a lot of opportunity, huge crowds, great opportunity to network. And thank you very much.
Tom?
No, no report.
David?
I have a report. Part of it's in the packet, but somehow I managed to leave out three library-related events. Of course, I attended the Strategic Planner Retreat on January 11th. I attended the meeting of the Roseland Working Group on the 17th, and more about that under my report as liaison. And I also attended the LoCEN meeting on the census on the 17th. Place was packed, easily 200 people there, and we had a good turnout of folks from the Commission and staff. The big deal is that we are what's called trusted messengers to reassure people that it's safe to answer the census. And in addition to having some ability to help them actually process the forms at the branches. So that's my report.
Did you have a question, Deborah?
I did. Could you say more about trusted messengers?
Yeah. The concept is that roughly 25% under count of Sonoma County residents in the 2010 census. 25%. And so it's because of underserved communities, especially the Latinx folks, who are afraid that, that the government getting census information means that people that don't really care to see show up at their doorstep may be there from ICE or other groups. And so the message is that it's completely illegal for census workers to share any information outside of that department. And I actually pinned someone down in an earlier meeting, and they said that, to their knowledge, there had never, ever been a leak of census materials. So that's what I meant. They're looking for any group that underserved communities might trust to give them the word, yes, this is a good thing to participate in, it means a lot of money. And in addition, that also helps determine our representation in Congress.
And so did we self-identify, or did they identify us as a trusted?
They, we've been working together with the county for months on this.
Gotcha.
So it's a joint project.
Barbara?
To, second what David said, there's several trusted messengers, but library is one. And maybe perhaps our Director could give us just a few words about, because the, the initial emphasis is, of course, going to be all online. It's going to be the first brush of whatever, and the part that libraries are playing in that.
Right. We are doing a, excuse me, yes, the initial push, as you said, will be online. But the, the point is that libraries are the right partners for this because we are so trusted and welcoming, and people know that they can come to the library and not have to worry about being identified. They can just participate in the count. So we're very happy to be partnering with the county in this effort.
And are we not putting aside some computers in different branches when we can? Yes, we are.
Okay. Mine was very short because most of my report was in the Commission Chair part. But the one thing I did do was I totally forgot about a Friends meeting, and it kind of hit home. One of our things to do is to create that liaison and be that connection between the library and Commission and our Friends groups. And this is a reminder to myself, as much as you guys, but more to myself, that this is an important function that we do serve as a Commissioner. So, okay. Moving on, Director's evaluation. We originally had planned on having a closed session tonight, but because half of the Evaluation Committee was out of town for a good deal of January, doing ALA and a lot of other meetings, we did not get as far along on creating the draft that we were going to. So we are going to have that done the first week in February. We're going to go over it during the month. We're going to meet with Ann. We needed to collect some more information from Ann in this process too, so that was another holdup to it all. And we'll have the evaluation for the March meeting. So, okay, so next is Finance.
My report is in the packet. And the Commission proposals for the budget has been moved to 10.4.
All righty. Advocacy? Deborah? Report, comments, thoughts?
Deborah, report is in the packet.
Okay.
And in addition, I will be flying to Washington DC on Saturday. There is a brief fly-in for some small, a small group of library advocates from around the country who will be hitting Capitol Hill in a strategic fashion. So I'll report on that when I get home.
All righty. Barbara?
Yeah, just a quick question on the Advocacy Committee report. I see that on page 56, Ray reported to the committee that the Hillsborough City Council is going to discuss the Three North Street site on January 21st. And I wondered if there was an update on that since we're talking about the Hillsborough refresh later on.
Andy?
I think Ray and I were both there, and, you know, I'm happy to, you know, Ray certainly has the line on what's happening politically, but this was a very well-attended meeting. They talked about four potential sites, including the one that had seemed to be a possible site for a new library in conjunction with affordable housing. Based on what happened in the meeting, I would say that is probably not going to happen. The, the site where that, that was a site that was under consideration for that, and I know Ray has the history of this much more than I do, but was a industrial slash agricultural building that had been used for many years, it's still there. And the community has been working for some time to transform it into a farmer's market and event space. And there's been a long planning process with some approvals that have gone into it. Recently, the Foley Family Foundation pledged $7 million to help make that happen. I would say there was general acclaim for that, very little discussion about relocating the library. And so Ray and I talked briefly afterwards, I always value his opinion, and I think we both felt that unless the grant were to fall through, extremely unlikely that there would be any pursuit of the library. I don't know, have you had any discussion with David McCaughan? You haven't? Okay. So Ray, anything you would, you would add to what I said? Okay.
So of the four sites, none of them seem realistic?
No, no, it wasn't that. It was, this was the only one that was under consideration with the library.
Okay. And the, when you mentioned four potential sites for a library, though?
No, no, four potential sites for affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah, no, there were four. The focus of the meeting was affordable housing. There were four sites they talked about. Only one had been considered as a possible new site for the library, and that was the one I just spoke about.
Thank you. Yeah, there was a big article about that on Sunday in the paper. I didn't realize it was the same site, the Foley.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Tom?
I want to put a positive spin on this. If the Foleys can give $7 million for a farmer's market, we need to put them down for more than that for our capital campaign for library facilities. And I did make my note, and I'm sure other people have too. So what, what we get is information, and we need to keep it in mind that there are a lot of different things to look there.
Thank you. Okay. So that was advocacy, right? Okay, Foundation Liaison, Tom, we're back to you. Any reports?
We had a meeting, I was there. It was generally positive. They are moving to try to deal with the suggestions that were made by the, the people who came and studied them earlier and suggestions, and they have kicked out the van and so forth. It's still kind of trying to figure out how they're going to do it. It's a big, big change, and they're, they're looking at it very carefully, and I'm not negative about their attitudes. We just have to see how it works out. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Randall, Measure Y Oversight Liaison.
There was no meeting in the past month. They should be meeting later in February to go over the half-year results.
All righty. Roseland Coalition, David?
Yes. I'm the liaison to the Roseland Library Coalition. Karen is the alternate. It's our plan in future meetings to split this report. But anyway, I'm going to do it this month. A couple of groups that people should pay to be aware of. The Roseland Library Coalition dates back about five years. It's a large group of, of
It's a large group of folks in the community and also includes some commissioners and staff members. You should each have a copy of the newsletter, Roseland Library Coalition Newsletter, February 2020. This was privately produced. It's not a library production. And this is the English-language version. It also went out in a Spanish-language version. So you can see generally what's been going on from the coalition's point of view. The other defined term is the Roseland Working Group. This is a group that's convened by the coalition and by Lana jointly in the boardroom at the Central Library, hopefully every month. We've had and have not had a meeting for several months. And so this is a group of, fairly large group of commissioners and staff, plus some folks from the Roseland Library Coalition. Anyway, the Working Group had a meeting on January 17th. The big news from the Working Group is that we have confirmation that the new plans do include an external book drop. Also, Lana told me that the schedule for proceeding is the February 13th is the deadline for the architect to submit drawings to the library. And then the library will change them if needed and submit them to the city by the end of this month for the permitting process. And it's our understanding that we're going to have an expedited permitting process. No clear indication of when that process will end, but things are finally beginning to move at a pretty decent speed. So I believe that I've covered the things that Karen and I wanted to talk about.
All righty, Barbara?
Yeah, just a quick question, David. This afternoon, I saw the email that had this newsletter in it, and I noted that you hadn't seen it before that.
That's right.
And I was just curious, because when I opened it up, it didn't look quite like this printout, but I saw that the Sonoma County Library Foundation's logo was on it. And you said that it was printed privately. I was just kind of curious about the background of this, where it came from, and who's doing it.
Well, Pat Cuda, who is the Chair of the Library Coalition, produced this. And they have a working arrangement. In fact, I think they have actually a formal agreement, memorandum of understanding between the coalition and the Sonoma Library Foundation. So they're associated with it.
So is the foundation publishing this newsletter?
No.
So should all of the commissioners be on the distribution list, or?
I felt it was that the commission should see this newsletter. So I asked Jane to send it out.
So perhaps we can be on future distribution list?
Yes, I will.
As our liaison?
Yes, I will see that that is done. I think several are already on that list, but I'll make sure that everybody is added.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on to the SOP Committee. Karen had a work-related meeting that she had to be to tonight. She was going to try and make it here, and she had told me that she'd be at least an hour late. So we're just coming up on an hour. We're a little ahead of her time, though. We have not met for the last couple of months. I believe she is planning to have a meeting sometime this month, and we'll get back into gear and get back up and running again. So that's the report. And the bylaws. Anything?
Just before I left my office this afternoon, I noticed that we have a response to a question we submitted to our attorney concerning the bylaws, and I haven't actually had time to read it. But depending upon what's going there, we may actually have something to present in the next month, we hope.
All righty. And moving on to the orientation and training. I think most of you were at the meeting with Diane, and that was one piece of it. We have to get together because there are some other things we need to plan and do. Okay, and all-day lab committee. That's kind of sitting on the back burner at this point in time until we figure out how the labs will fit into working with Diane and the strategic plan. So, okay. There are no lab appointments this time, so we're down to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anybody has any questions about or would like to pull? Randall?
I'm concerned that we don't have minutes for the Saturday, January, the whatever workshop. There's no minutes in here.
I don't believe any minutes were taken. No, I don't believe any minutes were taken. But we could probably put a report together.
Yes, we will have a report.
Okay. Diane, we'll put a report together and get it out to everybody. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, Barbara McKenzie has made the motion to approve the consent calendar. David Cahill has seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All righty, so it passed unanimously. Okay, we're down to action items by motion. 10.1, Suzanne Silva. This is adopted recommendation to add shover positions and increase the FTE location for library specialist position system-wide.
Good evening, commissioners. Sorry, this is on page 80. And as you are aware, in October, we had adopted the shover library, or, excuse me, shover job description. And at this time, we are just wanting to move forward with actually allocating some positions. The Public Services Division managers came up with allocations of needs based on discussions with the branch managers. And so at this point, we know, you know, what the duties will be and what the needs are by the branches. And in order to recruit, we just needed to have some of the classifications authorized so that we know exactly how many staff we'll need to recruit for.
All righty. So do I hear a motion to adopt questions? Okay, sorry. I apologize.
Thank you for this. I'm sure, I know that we're all excited about adding diversity and opportunity to the workforce, and I know that was the principal conversation that we had about this a number of times. So it's wonderful that this is being implemented. I had a question on page 81 about the different branches and the different allocations of the shelvers. I was wondering two things. One is the, whether the higher allocations implies a higher number of volunteers in those particular branches that are, you know, being, their work is being replaced by paid staff. That was one question. I have another one.
Well, these numbers were determined, like we said, by door count, circulation, and the number of shelving that is required at those branches.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering, because the volunteers, the different branches have volunteers, and this is one of the main things that volunteers do, right? So do, could, I see some people are going to come down and tell us more.
At this time.
What the volunteers are going to do. And I'm just wondering if that, again, if that's implied that, for example, if Sebastopol has a whole lot of volunteers, they're getting more shelvers.
Great, we're happy to answer your question. Lana Adlai, Public Services Division Manager. So with this change and the addition of the shover classification, we will need to transition our volunteers to doing other duties besides shelving. And that was our arrangement with our Union 1021. So the allocation was, as Suzanne stated, a number of factors, conversations with each of our branches, looking at if they had existing library aids, so that it's an existing classification that can still shelf. And we have different amounts of library aids per branch. We looked at circulation, the number of items that staff are checking in per branch, and created an average for what we thought was an accurate check-in number. So all of those considerations transitioned into the numbers that you're seeing before you today on page 81.
So could you give us an idea of some of the tasks that the volunteers will be doing instead of shelving?
So as part of this process, and it's been a long process for a few months, we did an extensive survey with each of our branch managers, in which we facilitated other tasks that volunteers could do in the branch. And branch managers have been preparing their volunteers for this change. So we got a number of suggestions, but we are still working with the managers in that transition. We are very aware that we want to handle this carefully. We love our volunteers. We value their work. We know some of them have been with us for 40 years, so we want to make sure that they are still satisfied with their work, still love the library, but we do need to make this change.
So do you anticipate that there will be work for the current volunteers, or it's still not quite clear yet?
We, I think we do anticipate that there will still be work. I think some of our volunteers will make the choice of whether they were, they're interested in doing that work or not. It really depends on, I think, the individual volunteer.
So maybe they can be encouraged to join the Friends, come over and volunteer with the Friends?
They can definitely join the Friends in the library and our library advisory boards. They are also eligible to apply for this position.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Well, I, for one, am really happy because I understand that the shover position is going to be open to high school students. And that's what hooked me finally. I mean, my grandmother was a big part of it, but that's what hooked me finally. And from that point on, I worked in libraries all the way through, that's the way I put myself through college. So, thank you.
Right.
Opening it up for young people.
Definitely. And I just want to clarify to you that while it is a growth opportunity for the, for, you know, the younger and a career opportunity, it also is an opportunity for, you know, veterans, people that are returning to the workforce. So we want to be able to establish diversity in all, you know, shapes and sizes and, you know, ages and everything. But yes, it is an entry-level career opportunity as well. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Tom?
I move that the Sonoma County Library Commission adopt the recommendation to add 14.8 FTE shover positions and increase 1.25 FTE library specialist positions system-wide.
I second that.
Okay, who seconded it? Barbara. Okay, Tom Hauser moved, made the motion, and Barbara McKenzie seconded it. So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, guys, very much for your work. Okay, 10.2, approval, approving the proposal contract by Anderson Brulei Architects for the Hillsburg refresh.
Good evening. I'm David Tashchev, Facilities Manager for Sonoma County Library. We are presenting a proposal to you this evening for the design and professional services with Anderson Brulei Architects. Do we have any questions about what you're looking at?
Barbara?
I noticed on the project bid that this is the three-quarters of a million dollars, $750,000. And I think my question was answered earlier, but when I asked the question, so we anticipate staying in this space, is that correct, before we put three-quarters of a million dollars into renovating it?
Well, we've already approved the $750,000. This is just approving the contract for the architectural services.
Right.
The answer is yes.
So the answer is yes, okay. Just for the record. And let's see, I had a second question. No, I had a second question about the other thing. Thank you very much, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay, Andy?
Hey, Dave. Quick question about the budget. I know that from previous discussions that we have to keep the construction budget below a certain number in order to avoid triggering additional ADA requirements. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you happen to know offhand what that trigger point is?
Yeah, $165,000. Right.
The $165,000 is not the furnishings. Most of what we're spending is for furnishings. The $165,000 is changing a wall or a door or something, that structural-type thing. And when, once you get over the $165,000, then we have to take out the steps or do that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Tom's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. It does. And if I'm bringing this up at the wrong moment, you know, you can just say so. But the, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Friends of the Hillsburg Library, but I know from having attended their meeting last month that they have a fairly substantial amount of money potentially available to assist with the refresh of the library? And I'm just wondering if you've had any discussions with them, or at what point in the process, we would consider whether and how we could use that, that potentially available money?
Okay. Anderson Brulei has been working on our Roseland project, and they have some really creative solutions on being able to build walls without it being construction costs. And so we're, we would look really forward to talking with the Friends and having them participate. I believe that, you know, that's the next step. Once we approve Anderson Brulei to start working, that's the first thing we do, is we have a stakeholders' meeting.
That would be great. I just want to encourage, again, I don't want to speak for them, but it seemed like, it seemed like they were potentially enthusiastic about helping out, and this might enable us to improve the overall refresh. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or thoughts? Oh, here comes Karen. Hi, Karen. Tom?
I move that the Sonoma County Library Commission, one, approve the addendum to the professional services agreement for Anderson Brulei Architects, and authorize Ann Hammond Director to execute such agreement on behalf of the commission. Two, approve the bid proposal included with this agenda item, and authorize Ann Hammond Director to execute such contracts on behalf of the commission with contractor with respect to the Hillsburg TI project within the parameters of the professional service agreement and addendum.
Second.
All righty. So Tom Hauser made the motion for 10.2, and Andy Elkind seconded it. All those in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. And Karen Schneider has just joined us. Okay, moving on to 10.3. That's David again.
All right, again, this is a copycat of what we just passed, but it's for the Guernville branch. It's a much smaller project, but the contract still exceeds our director's authority. So we were presenting this to you to get the authority to proceed with a minor refresh in Guernville.
Any questions or thoughts or comments? Barbara?
I probably don't know what I'm talking about, but I thought that there was some concern about whether the entire library was going to be carpeted or recarpeted or not. I wondered about the update on that.
That will probably be decided at our next public meeting on the 8th.
So that hasn't been decided, then, completely?
Well, not at this time.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? Tom?
I move that the Sonoma County Library, you know, somebody else can read this.
And Karen Schneider has just joined us. Okay. Moving on to 10.3. That's David again.
All right. Again, this is a copycat of what we just passed, but it's for the Guernville branch. It's a much smaller project, but the contract still exceeds our director's authority. So we were presenting this to you to get the authority to proceed with a minor refresh in Guernville.
Any questions or thoughts or comments? Barbara?
I probably don't know what I'm talking about, but I thought that there was some concern about whether the entire library was going to be carpeted or recarpeted or not. I wondered about the update on that.
That will probably be decided at our next public meeting on the 8th.
So that hasn't been decided then completely?
Well, not at this time.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? Tom?
I move that the Sonoma County Library, you know, somebody else can read this. Well, your commission, one, approve the addendum to the professional services agreement for Knoll and Tam and authorize Ann Hammond Director to execute such agreements on behalf of the commission. Two, approve the bid proposal included with this agenda item and authorize Ann Hammond Director to execute such contracts on behalf of the commission with contractor with respect to the Guernville project within the parameters of the professional service agreement and addendum.
Okay.
So Tom Hauser made the motion, and Paul Heavenridge seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay. So Tom Hauser made the motion, and Paul Heavenridge seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay. We're moving on to 10.4. So commission budget priorities. Do you want to give the lead-in, Randall?
If you'll go to the two-page document that was handed out, it's a repeat, it's a repeat of the stuff that's in my report. Basically, we got suggestions from some of the commissioners. We discussed this at the Finance Committee meeting, and we broke it down into five categories. Yes, I know, that's more than three, but it fits. So basically, the first category is increasing hours. Now, what we're doing is we're asking for staff to price out what each of these options would cost and investigate if there would be any problems in implementing this. We will actually vote on these at the all-day budget commission meeting. So we're just asking for price quotes on these items. So increasing hours, we have four hours on Sunday, filling up Tuesday evening, filling up Thursday evening, and possibly, there's been some requests for us to look at, opening 30 minutes earlier on weekdays. Okay. The next category is expanding services and outreach. Create the new strategic plan that's already underway. We'll be finishing it up next fiscal year. Open the Roseland branch, and we want to make sure that we can make it a full branch with real hours like all the rest of the branches and adding events that would be of interest to that community. As part of the strategic plan, we want to look at underserved groups, both in terms of culture or language or location, and see if there isn't additional services we can provide. Work with the Friends of the Labs to do more outreach and talk to people. More events and physically expansion of the service area. Technology. The hotspots and the Chromebooks are really popular, so we should consider how much more we want to expand that. We need classes on using the resources. The East Street Studio is really cool. It would be great if some of those, some of that equipment and some of the services were available to other branches in the area. And we have all this wonderful technology in the forum rooms. How can we utilize that for great experiences? Staffing. We need more staff. How many more staff? What's it going to cost? Also, there was a suggestion that we should make sure that library staff members have access to the Internet and to all of our wonderful electronic services. And this would be a voluntary program. I mean, if we're giving hotspots to patrons, we should be able to check out a hotspot to a staff member for long periods of time, if they want it. Facilities. We'll be doing a new facilities plan next year, and then the renovation projects that were already discussed. There was a suggestion that we should improve something at every branch to make everyone feel like they're part of getting new stuff. And we still need to do all the leases. So that's sort of the summary of what we discussed. So are there any suggestions, disagreements? Tom? Tom?
Barbara?
Oh, it's Barbara. I'm sorry. I can't see.
Yes. The purple arm is mine. I had a couple of comments. One is that I don't believe we had heard from every commissioner, so if there's people that haven't weighed in, I hope they do. Under increasing hours, we also talked about at the Finance Committee meeting, basically reassessing everything, just besides these, you know, rather defined categories, but just kind of reassessing all the hours, starting earlier, that kind of thing. And, you know, they associate the costs, of course, but we know that the senior management staff would have a good view of, you know, kind of an overall assessment. Secondly, under expanding services, we talked about a mobile van, and I don't think that idea got in here. And also, under outreach, since we combined these two things, under outreach, one of the issues for staff is their inability to actually get outside the branches, as I understand it, to do the outreach. And so under staffing, we put decreasing staff stress, and so it's related to that probably. But I would like to make sure that part of, at least my feeling about the outreach is allowing particularly the branch managers time to get out and do outreach in the community. And then, that was it with the mobile van. Thank you.
Yes, Deborah?
This is quite a list. It seems to me that increasing hours, expanding services and outreach, technology, staffing, facilities, that makes sense in terms of the commissioner priority list. But I think getting down in the weeds about adding four hours on Sunday, adding three hours on Tuesday, adding three hours on Thursday evenings, it just seems to me that if we have this priority list for the library that isn't the next step, and I haven't been through this very often, but isn't the next step to go to the library staff and say, how would you, how would you achieve that? Or what exactly, what exactly would your way, and in fact, is that one of your priorities as well? And I, I just, you know, there's been a lot of effort put into this clearly, but it just, it just strikes me that we're down in the weeds a lot here.
Okay. Barbara?
Well, just a tiny bit of historical background. Before we had Measure Y, the commissioners were asked for their priorities, and there wasn't any point in having any priorities because there wasn't any money to do anything. And then we've kind of edged into more and more establishing our priorities. This one, I think what, the way that it's been developed here, Randall wrote it up really nicely, was kind of what our big priorities were, and we would say probably increasing hours, expanding services, and, you know, that. And then he's just included in some of the comments that people made, just so they didn't get, you know, ignored. But I don't think that that was the intention of, I think what we need to do when we set our priorities is to say, increasing hours, expanding services and outreach, technology and staffing, and not, you know, picking and choosing all that. I don't think that was the intent.
So to clarify, these are not specific things that we're asking the library to look at the cost of, these dot points underneath the major, underneath the major areas?
That's sort of correct. Now, a lot of these items listed here are already underway and are already budgeted. And I just put them here so they don't get lost, that these are things we want to continue to happen. Probably the most specific items are increasing the hours. Under technology, I'm sure Vicky has a very large wish list. So it's, I think that's, that's probably the big expenditure going forward is increasing the hours. But I don't think the other things are like, oh, we don't want to look at staffing or current staffing levels. So I think this is both general things that we are interested going forward and specific things that we would like cost estimates on. So it's both.
Okay. Stephen?
Yes, and sorry, I did miss that email about providing input, and I will. My general observation, and I have put this request in before about a priority of mine in expanding services and outreach, I'd like to be able to have some pricing done about sitting down with our partners, our natural allies, the school districts, Department of Public Health, which includes Department of Mental Health, and any other natural affinity branch to be, or a branch agency, to be able to work together to establish, like, how we all work together to help our electeds accomplish their goals, which is to reduce the state of our unsheltered, to be able to basically help everyone that we have listed here under underserved groups, how we could work together, formalize formal agreements, MOUs, about how we're going to start working together to show the value of how all government agencies can help to achieve the needs of the underrepresented groups. Thanks.
Okay.
Now, a number of the items we have on here, like Barbara mentioned, the mobile van, that's already being spent with surplus money. It's being constructed.
Not that one. More. More vans.
The mobile van.
No, I know. We talked about more vans, though. We talked about different kinds of vans besides the one we're already purchasing.
Getting the van is nice, but it'll probably take one, possibly two, full-time staff members to utilize it. So we need to put that. And if we start doing other things, like a real bookmobile or something, not only will it cost, but there will be staffing costs to support it.
Well, that's kind of the point of bringing it all to the, to the budget hearing. I think we should, we should kind of clarify, there's budget priorities and then there's commission priorities. And this is kind of a combination of things. When I hear Stephen talking about the expanding partnership, this is kind of a strategic plan priority. And these are, the intent of this, I believe, was to establish budget priorities. So when the staff comes back with the budget for the next year, we kind of are, that's what we think more money should be spent on. This is my understanding. Karen's acting like that's not the case, but...
Hi. Sorry. No, I admit I arrived late due to a campus commitment, but I'm, I'm having trouble with this list because it says this, the commission will vote on which items to actually include in FY 2021 budget. And then there is a list of things that appear to be very deeply in the weeds, to use another commissioner's phrase. And I'm concerned that if I am voting on this, I am saying add three hours on Tuesday evening. And I, in general, I think that we should, as I said in my last report, stay very broad, look to the library for guidance, and not get into the deep details.
Okay. So might I suggest, then, that we take this list, take out the things that are already in progress or have been funded, and create a list of increasing hours. Okay, there's some possibilities here, but how many hours would we really like to increase it? Maybe not necessarily in this format or any of these formats. But how much would it cost? How much would a mobile van cost, including the staffing on it? And go down through these and pull those things out that are actual budget items. And then let's work with that and come back to our March meeting, and then we can take a serious look at it and vote, possibly. Barbara?
I think that, again, the timing didn't work out really well on this. I think we were trying to consolidate everybody's ideas, and the reason there's a lot of detail is because it was things that people said in their email. People didn't just say increasing hours, expanding services and technology. And I think when the, when the Finance Committee looked at this, just to kind of honor what everybody said, you know, Randall put it all in the list so we could all talk about it. And we did talk about a lot of these things. And I think just because the time is running out and at the same time the staff is developing the budget and developing based on their priorities, we wanted to have the commission priorities really clear. Last year when we did this, or the year before at least, you know, we had, you know, three priorities, bam, bam, bam. It was hours, you know, outreach and facilities or something, real simple, real clear. And I think we're maybe getting a little concerned about this, and maybe we should, because we're just asking for a straw vote tonight. So we have a straw vote tonight that the commission priorities are increasing hours, number one, expanding services and outreach, number two, technology, number three, staffing, number four, and facilities, number five. And we get a thumbs up or, you know, a straw vote on that. Don't worry about the rest of it. Then we're there.
Okay. Karen?
Okay. That's, this raises another issue, which is by numbering them, are we ranking these priorities? Because I wouldn't put facilities at the bottom.
Are we what?
Ranking? We said one, two, three, four, five. So I think a straw vote is a loose thing, but at this point in time, we need to have some more, I mean, get rid of the, I guess, just use the top.
I don't think she's asking about getting rid of, she's saying if we make increasing hours, number one, does that the first priority above all others? Or are these all priorities that we'd like to have looked at and see what staff says we can do with these options? And my interpretation is they're not numbered, they're not in a rank, they're there. Let's get some feedback from staff about these types of things and what they think can be done and should be done.
Okay. David?
I have some procedural problems here. The commissioner priority list says this is a require, this is the attached to the motion, says this is a request for the staff to provide cost estimates. The commission will vote on which items to actually include in the budget. And Randall indicated this would happen at the budget session. That's not what the motion says. The motion is fairly vigorous, directing the staff to include these items in the budget. So I don't think we're ready on this. I would move to postpone this until the March meeting.
Okay. And in the meantime, could the Finance Committee, okay, maybe I should ask first. Do we want to cover all five of these to start with and then have all five, or then then choose three or what have you? But get the information on all five of these? Were they actual budget numbers? Not, well, some of it isn't budget, just isn't budget. But get the actual budget numbers that we need to decide if we want to include. How many hours do we want to include? If we do all, all the hours listed here, I think somewhere, at some point, I heard it would increase the budget by 20%, which is unreasonable. But okay, what is four hours? What is three hours? What is six hours? What is two and a half hours? You know, that's information we need. Okay, yeah, we need to increase the hours, but how many hours do we want to increase it?
And what would it cost?
And what would it cost? Yeah. And so we'll need information there. Expanding services. Strategic plan is already in line. There are a lot of these things that fall actually into the strategic plan. And like Barbara mentioned, some of these are commission goals, and then there are budget goals. And there's two, two categories here that we need to separate out. Could the Finance Committee separate those out and come back?
regarding the hours, one of the reasons, well, the primary reason we did not add Sunday hours this time was because we wanted to wait and get the data from our door counters and get farther along with the strategic plan. Well, now, we are getting some really good data from the door counters. We have not gotten to that part of the strategic plan where we actually ask people what they want in terms of hours. If we could put that off until we get a little farther into that, as Diane said, we're going to be doing all of this survey and open houses and all that work in the month of March. So by the time we get to the budget workshop at the end of March, we'll have some really solid information that we can bring to you and do a plan that makes sense at that point.
Barbara?
Just one last comment. I think that's great. I think what our director just said is just right on the on the money. I do want to just say one more time, everybody's sick of hearing me say this, but the, you know, the Measure Y Committee, very, very concerned about hours. It was the top, our top priority last time, last budget year, and we didn't do everything we wanted to do. So just in terms of Commissioner Schneider's comment, are these priorities or not in numbered order? I would, you know, make the case that increasing hours is the first priority. The other ones are not necessarily numbered.
Yes, I follow with what Commissioner McKenzie had just said. As far as like the straw vote, it did seem like there were a number of thumbs up on having these one, two, three, four, five categories. I, too, would also say the fact that increasing hours would be my number one, just to give direction to staff, to have them come back through something. Out of all this, I would say, yes, increasing number of hours is number one for me.
Okay. Tom?
My gut feeling is, yes, hours are really important, but I'd like to see what the staff comes up with in terms of what's doable and the cost and what people want. I don't know. And that's been one of the problems. And so it wouldn't be, I wouldn't upset me if we just said, okay, we'll leave money in the budget for the second half of the fiscal year to spend a million dollars on hours, and we'll see how it goes, if we're not ready by the time we're putting our budget together. But I agree, we need to have the information. I don't want to frivolously go out and say, this is what I'm going to do, because I like to be there at 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM in the morning when it opens.
Question. Do we finalize our budget in May or June?
You have to have it done by June. There's no real reason why you have to do it before then.
Okay. So June, we need the last spot. Okay. So we have some time. It's not like we have to decide this all tomorrow. Okay, good. Yes, Deborah?
And thank you very much to Randall and the finance committee. I know it's like herding cats. I have to admit, I didn't get my list in. And you all have done a wonderful, wonderful jobs, truly.
Well, it's a new procedure. It's not something we've done specifically like this before. And pulling it together and sorting it out is all part of the process. So, yes, I do appreciate this. And it made me start to think in a whole different way, too. And I appreciate that. So, okay, so it is agreed, then, or should I have a motion that we put this off, refine it a little further?
There was a motion made.
Pardon?
There was a motion made.
Oh, okay.
I moved to postpone this item until the next meeting. Then my motion was not seconded at that time, but I
Okay.
I just withdraw it.
Okay, so.
Depends on what Reese, depends on what Reese would prefer.
I made the motion.
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion, Tom.
Why don't you withdraw?
I still think it's a great motion. But I'm willing to withdraw it if Reese would prefer to go in a different direction.
Now I'm confused.
I think you said he's withdrawing it.
Okay, you're withdrawing it.
I prefer to withdraw it.
Okay. So you made the motion to put this through?
Put this off.
Oh, put this off?
Yeah. Postpone the item until the March meeting.
Let's how about, let's postpone this.
Who made the motion?
Figure it out with the state, staff and what the finance committee does.
No. May I ask the, Jane, you said there was a motion on the table? What is the motion on the table and who made it? David, like David said, he made the motion to postpone, and there was no second, and there was discussion. Okay, so we do not have a motion on the table right now?
To postpone? To postpone till March or to just postpone?
But it was not seconded.
Okay, wait a minute.
Was, my motion was to postpone this until the next meeting. Maybe we should have the videotape.
So there's no
Okay, so let's withdraw it and start all over fresh.
All right, fine.
Sorry, I'm getting confused. I apologize, you guys.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that that we approve the commission priorities to be included in the development of the 2021 budget, and they are the five that are listed in the finance committee report. Five, the headings, the categories.
Ah, okay.
With emphasis on hours. Stephen?
And if I can add, I thought that Ann was nice enough to say that she and her staff could work on those five and produce something for us between now and our next meeting in March, what I heard.
Do people agree with that? Okay, all those, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so Barbara McKenzie moved that we use these five main categories for, and to explore, for our budget meeting, whichever, whenever it comes. Okay. And was it Paul that seconded it?
David.
I did.
I seconded David.
Oh, Dave and Paul seconded it. You can put whichever one down. Paul's shorter to spell. Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of postponing this and using these as the five top categories, and having Ann and her staff find out the information of how they would implement it or cost-wise, et cetera. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, that wasn't my motion, though. It wasn't to postpone it. It was a motion to use these priorities for the staff to develop the budget around, not postponing anything, not putting them aside, use these categories as commission priorities.
Okay.
Is there, who seconded?
I did, actually.
Okay, so the motion was to use these five priorities for Ann to use to build around, and it was moved by Barbara, seconded by Paul and/or David. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay, it was anybody opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. And I apologize for getting Okay.
Madam Chair, if we wish to amend these later after further discussion?
Pardon?
If we wish to amend these after further discussion, we can do so.
I would assume as much, yes.
Okay, just checking.
I mean, all we have to do is move it and change it.
Just checking.
Moving on to resolution to adopt informal procedures to engage construction project management firms. David?
11-1.
We've invited Ann Keck to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ann Keck, General Counsel. I have it turned on. I just need to talk a little louder.
Move it closer, please. You have to eat the microphone, essentially.
There's one purpose for this resolution, and that is to allow the library to obtain construction project management assistance for its numerous projects, which this commission is aware of, without going through the competitive bidding process. As you know, public works projects in the size and scope of the ones a library is now engaged in with its library branches, requires the library to comply with the Public Contract Code, which primarily requires compliance with a competitive bidding process, which requires additional staff time to put things out for bid, notification to prospective bidders, evaluating of responses, and a new, a rather lengthy process to to choose which types of consulted and other services to engage in. However, the government code does provide a system that's based on qualifications rather than just price bidding for the engagement of several types of construction consultants, including construction project managements. A discussion in the agenda item is provided to describe for you the types of services that construction project managers can provide, and which will assist the library in its numerous ongoing refresh projects as well as other projects. And because the law requires that the commission approve this type of resolution, this type of matter by resolution or ordinance, in order for the library to invoke it, we're bringing it before you today to approve basically a process by which the library may engage construction project managers, managers, without engaging in the competitive bidding process.
Stephen?
This sounds good, but can you speak to what similar government bodies, like how many have also adopted this informal process or have not?
I'm sorry, the number of other
Similar agencies like ours?
I've not, not done that research. I know that there are numerous governmental bodies, numerous counties in the area have adopted this. But I've not conducted extensive research into that issue.
Would this apply to construction projects of any size?
Yes, there's no size limit on this. You know, the Public Contract Code does allow a, us to have a non-competitive bidding process if projects are under 200,000. If you recall, we had previously adopted the Uniform Construction Project Cost Accounting Act procedures to allow us to do non-competitive bidding for certain types of dollar value projects, but all of the ones currently engaged involve a greater dollar value than that. This would allow, this resolution would allow the library to engage construction project managers only, just the managers, regardless of the cost of the project.
David?
Let me just say, I think this is a terrific idea. I'm so glad that you're bringing this forward. And when time comes, I would love to read the motion.
Barbara?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, too. I just have one question. I've read this about six times. It still doesn't make any sense to me. On page 103, under B, non-applicability of informal process, it says, "The procedures set forth herein shall not apply when the library director determines that the services needed are of a more technical nature and involve little professional judgment, and that requiring bids would be in the public interest." That seems like exactly, I don't understand little, requiring little professional judgment. Seems like it should require more professional judgment. Does that make sense to you?
This is the language that's contained in that government code section. And you're probably going to have to talk with construction managers to be able to identify what types of technical data they're requiring. But the whole purpose of the Mini Brooks Act that this is based on is to allow government agencies to engage people as consultants, to give them advice, to provide them with expertise in enabling them to make decisions, rather than providing a technical thing, that is, I'm going to go and install something specific, or I'm going to give you technical advice on how to install a, you know, a technology communication system. I'll say that, you know, that this is also gives the public agency head the discretion to say, no, I'm not going to utilize this process because I think that public bids would be in the best interest, competitive bids would be in the public interest, and that it would allow them to then go forward and do it for those types of projects. So this is just one of those requirements of the code section. And I'm not sure if Dave can shed any additional light on what that would mean, but that is my understanding. It's something that would not engage, not engage the consultant in providing advice regarding a project, but would rather be more of a physical, technical nature.
Okay. Well, again, I think it's an excellent position for us to be in to adopt this. So thank you very much for your research.
Okay, Tom?
Will, who will approve these? Will these come before the commission? Will there be some financial cutoff level that they have to come before the commission? Could you explain that to the commission?
Yes, the, the process of selecting the, any kind of construction project manager would not come before the commission. But approval of the contract with the consultant would come before the commission unless the commission has already provided that contracting authority to the library director. So, for example, the library director has authority to enter into contracts with consultants that do not exceed $50,000. The library director and staff would not have to come to the commission for approval of that contract. Another example, your commission approved this evening the approval of the library director to enter into general consultant and labor services and purchasing agreement contracts with respect to the Roseland project that does not exceed $250,000 per contractor. So because you've already given the library director that monetary authority, that she would be able to enter into contracts with construction project managers that do not exceed that amount for that particular project.
I believe that the Sonoma Library had an experience with the project manager, David, with that little room, the, the reading room there, and it was an $80,000 project. And basically, what this person did is coordinate that, once this person's done, the next one's ready to do their job, and the next one's ready to do their job, which just, we don't have the staff to actually make that happen. So they take on as their job the scheduling of getting all this, they manage getting all the subcontractors and everybody to do their thing in time. And that's my understanding of what this is talking about.
There's also additional elements, for example, going out to competitive bid on some of the other projects. It requires a great degree of time, skill, knowledge, and detail analysis to compare the bids from bid to bid. So a construction project manager would also be, assist the library in choosing which of the general contractors to engage in its projects. So it's pre-construction, during construction, post-construction closeout requirements, and they would, that would span that entire scape.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I'm going to move that we adopt the resolution approving the Sonoma County Library's use of informal procedures to engage in construction project management firms pursuant to Government Code Section 2, 4, 4525 at
Sec.
Sec. At sequence.
Okay, so Barbara has made the motion to approve this resolution, or to adopt the resolution, excuse me. And David has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, do we have to have a roll call for this? Wait a minute. Was it through? It's a resolution, yeah. Okay. Sorry. Yeah, we do. It's down here. Okay. Cahill?
Yes or no?
Do you approve? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Elkind?
Yes.
Foxen, yes. Hauser?
Yes.
Heavenridge?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Merrick isn't here. Neff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Zolman?
Yes.
All right, unanimously, we passed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, there is no discussion. How about agenda items for future commission meetings? Any thoughts at this point in time?
Close session under record's evaluation. Do we need to talk anymore about our priority list?
Okay, yeah. It probably should be on the next time, I would think. Okay. Anything else? Stephen?
And some sort of reporter discussion about where we are with our labs, because I understood that we weren't going to have the next all-day lab gathering until a few other things were going to happen. Like, we move further in the strategic plan. But I, for me, I would like to have something more fleshed out by this body, because I'm going to show up at a lab meeting, and they're going to say, where are we? Are we not meeting again? So having some more meat behind that.
Anything else? Okay. Okay. Then, next meeting will be Monday, March 2nd, 2020, 6:00 p.m., and we will be at the library headquarters for our first time. So that'll be good.
Should we sing old Lang Syne to the city council chambers?
Pardon?
No.
And thank you all down there in the TV room for taking our pictures and keeping us going for the last six years or so.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, City of Santa Rosa, for the use of your facility for all this time.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, we are adjourned. Ten of eight, that's the best one I've ever done.